... With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, with which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible in justice. Thank you.
You have more comments?
Thank you.
Keep your position. I don't have glasses. And I can do that here. Dr. Keenan, okay. Ms. Wester is Xavier Priest, Dr. Mahoney, and Ms. Fisher.
Right here.
Let's go to Congress for the meeting tonight.
We hold two of those five speakers, sir.
Okay.
And we can get good sound.
Thank you. Before we go, before we hear from the financial consultant, just wanted to know that I put in front of you the press release that I sent out regarding the contract with Miss Chloe and her rehab, so that you'll know exactly what we said. Anything else in there I didn't say. Okay, well now...
What's that?
We're ready.
Oh, okay.
In front of you also, in front of you also is the...
I got it.
Okay, that we'll be talking about tonight.
Everyone, I'd like to introduce you to Ryan Gazoni. One of the principals, please.
GP Char, ZZ Owen.
ZZ Owen. Hi. Thank you. Haven't met anybody yet. Let me spell it first. He's one of the principals with the company, public financial resources that we've talked about. And your request is to speak to you about what this company potentially offer in terms of consulting services. Ryan?
Thanks for having me tonight. I'll just do a brief overview of PFR. I'll give a brief overview of PFR and who we are and some of the services that we do offer. And I brought some samples of forecasts that I model for you to look at and just here to answer any questions you may have. So, PFR is made up of six individuals. Five of us are treasurers. All five of us are acting treasurer for full-time and Bernie Strauss is a part-time treasurer. And then Deborah is our chief operating officer. She handles our day-to-day operations. We have a wide range of experience in school districts, from rural to urban to suburban, large and small. Currently, we represent, we have 250 school districts in the state that use our primary service, which is our software, our forecast software. And then we also have clients that from a wide range of areas they've contracted with us for. So, we do everything from, our main core businesses is we have a software, forecast software, which helps treasurers develop the five-year forecast. And that started about 25 years ago with two of the partners and it's grown since. And the program's become more and more robust. And so, twice a year, we do seminars and we have the majority of the treasurers come, give them the updates, answer questions on how to use the software, and they go back to the districts and usually use it on a monthly basis, which is what we encourage. We also have a number of districts right now, probably about 15 districts that we do every, we do all the forecast population for them. We work with the administration, the treasurer, and the board to develop the forecast. We present month-end reports on variances, projections on month-end, on a monthly basis. And then we've also done a lot of benchmarking work where districts have had special projects. They want us to come in and say, they want us to identify something where they're high or where they're spending something in a certain area. We've done levy modeling. So, this is kind of an overview of the things, basically anything financial. One of our partners was a long-time employee of the Department of Taxation. So, we do a lot of work with, for our clients, with legislators, developing different types of, especially, she's now just signed into law last night, trying to influence some decision-making on school funding, putting in scenarios, interpretations. So, that's been some of our big projects, taken a lot of our time recently. And so, in the area, some of the school districts that we work with on a more of a monthly basis or just beyond our standard forecast is, we've worked with Cleveland for about a year and a half on their forecast, they're using our software. Aleria, on a monthly basis, we help populate their forecast. Districts like Cincinnati, as well as Hudson. There's smaller rural districts like Jefferson and Huntington Valley that we do things on a monthly basis. Shaker Heights, last year, we wrapped up a year's worth of benchmarking analysis for them on everything from transportation to special education and looking at cost of the surrounding districts and different demographics. So, that's kind of an overview of the company. I'll give you a little bit of information about those in front of you. It's for, we partner with OSBA and it is for our, basically the population of a five-year forecast. So, what we do is we have tools that we take large data, data dumps from your district, and we have software we've developed to start identifying areas with the trends in any district where the trends, where there might be areas of concern, why things are trending one way or another. And then in the forecast, we use a lot of your tax valuation data, your LUCI rates, collection rates to look at what you think your real estate and public utility is going to be. We have a model that will be revised actually starting tonight on the state funding formula so we can tell you where we think your state fundings are going to come in. It balances to what the state pays on. We use live birth data and census data to look at your enrollment, look at your changes in enrollment, what your retention rates are, compare to those live birth rates so we can see what's going on with your enrollment. And it's proven to be a pretty accurate system. It's accurate not only with districts with combined revenue, it's accurate with districts with increasing enrollment, as well as if you're seeing returner schools, vouchers, and those trends as well. So, that's what we do on the revenue side. It's, we have a lot of data to help generate the revenue. That's the, probably the easier part to do. The expense side is the harder part to project. We hold a lot of data and we need those members of the district to go over with, here's what we're seeing, get some explanation on the data. If there's questions, we go further into it, you know, we'll sometimes line item by line item. And then, a lot of it in the five-year forecast is, okay, so here's where we think you are today, here's the data we've seen historically, and then we talk about what factors the district wants to use for. There's a lot of different, you know, what plans are going on, what plans have changed, and factoring those in. As part of the proposal, you would get the software that we use and districts are encouraged to use it on a monthly basis. So, there's month-end reports on there that you can generate yourself. What it does is you project on a monthly basis what you think in each area of the forecast you're going to receive in revenue or spend, and then we compare it with, when the month's complete, what actually came in. And look at is there any adjustment in the forecast, where are you trending right now compared to your last five-year forecast was? So, using different things like that, looking at purchase services, supplies, basically every line item. And sometimes it's fairly easy to project a line item, and sometimes it's very difficult because you have some variances and trends in there, things changing in the district. The nice thing is, is this kind of, our method kind of flushes some of that stuff out. Here's something to pay attention to because we're noticing these changes. And so, is this trend going to continue? Are some of our schools, are we going to continue to see special education scholarships increase by 35% each year? Is that starting to flatten out? Where's that going? Looking at it on a monthly basis. So, I brought two copies to pass around. This is actually, I'm also the treasurer of three of City Schools and we use, in our district, we use the software we developed. So, this is our standard template. It's not, the software is a lot more in-depth and robust, but what this is, is what the finished product looks like that we present and use as far as assumptions that we post on the website. So, there's always a lot of discussion around that. We also emphasize on things, establishing cash policies, cash balance policies, looking at when you're starting to get this to spend, those important things, how you bet, how bend that trend, get it online. But also, our forecast will be a lot of different modeling, modeling with different kind of salary increases, benefit increases, premium increases, as well as if you're making changes there, levy modeling. So, a lot of different areas in that sense that also model different scenarios.
Do you have an estimate of the amount of time? I see on the last page where it says we can discuss the time. Do you have like an estimate of how long it will be for we can at least halfway fix our situation?
We would, so a lot of it's going to depend on the data that we can get and the ability to dissect it. So, everyone, both school districts, anything yours does is part of the company's site. So, authorization from the school district, we can get certain data dumps. And then, once we start looking at that, we'll see what areas we have concern, we'll need more information. But typically, within a three-week period, we can have a pretty good product to you that says, here's something to discuss, here's what we found. We'll be asking a lot of questions in between that time, but having a product that we can come and say, here's our initial scope, here's what we think we'd recommend, and then talking about a lot of your future initiatives. Because, you know, looking at that, you could be spending 3% more each year on one line item, but if you have an initiative where you're going to have to be investing money in a certain area, we need to make sure a lot of it accurate. So, that's where, after that point, we're definitely with you to say, what areas, what's your strategic plan? What initiatives are you doing? What's cost those out? Where do we put those in the forecast?
I would expect that Ms. Thompson, you need key in helping us to get whatever follow-up data you need after the data, after the data dump, and show them the term. She was on vacation this morning. What's your business strategy?
Well, we're a software company. In Columbus is where our PO box is, but we actually cover the entire state. So, one of the partners is in Athens County, one's in Cincinnati, two are in Columbus, one's in Chillicothe, and I'm working really in Youngstown. So, we, everything we do is go-to meetings, so we meet twice a week. But what happened is, with the forecast, you'd have a primary person assigned. I'd probably be the primary person assigned to work with the district, but then, we all have our own expertise, so we may break up certain areas to other partners to work on and coordinate questions back through one person to our district.
So, if you were coming from transportation, are you going to be here for a month?
Yes. I, so if I'm coming from work, it's from where I get it here and then from here at home, it's always the same distance both ways. And a lot of the work, initial work and the data work is, you can do off-site. It's a lot better than using a pay-per-view.
What is the, how much do you do in a treasurer's office? I mean, we talked about the five-year forecast. What else do you need to do? Is there such a thing of you doing it all?
No, we don't do interim work. The reason, there's actually an ethical violation because we sell the software services to the district, we can also provide treasurer's work. We don't do things like accounts payable, payroll, things like that. What we do is basically data analysis, reporting, areas in that sense. So, different types of, we've done indirect cost applications and month-end reports. We can help develop a budget, put it in a certain budget format. There's actually an international budget format through ASBO International that we have a format that we, a template we use for that. So, we, my district, that's why I use my annual budget. ASBO, it's Association of School Business Officials International. So, like at NSBA, OASBO is a state chapter. ASBO is actually in the United States, Canada, South Africa, a little bit of Europe, and we use it. We have a couple of school districts in Southwest International.
Thank you. Am I understanding correctly that you will, or your company, will be creating, creating a software structure just for this district, our needs?
So, we have a software template. And what we do is we populate that template with all of your information. So, we'll pull information from how the Department of Education dumped it in, how the Department of Taxation, your month, your benefits, medical benefits, census gets dumped in there, your salary schedules. So, it's going to be, that will all be customized for your district information, but it's a standard software we use across the state.
So, this price of $6,900 would be what we would pay for you to do that? Less the five-year forecast alone?
Correct. We populate the forecast, work with the treasurer's office, and then also show the treasurer's office how to maintain it, should they want to continue using it throughout the year.
Plus transportation, plus transportation costs?
And that's usually, especially with, I mean, depending on how much interaction we'll be on-site. We'll be on-site as much as you, as you need us to, given the, you know, the time constraints we have. But most of the time, we accomplish the tour and work off-site. And, but, you have some clients that want us on-site more, for more interaction, more discussions, we can do that. Other clients that want to do everything through the phone, we can do that way as well.
So, the template, the software, will be something that, and I hear you saying this one time, on-site, will be something that our employees will learn to, relatively easily, learn how to use it. And I, just briefly looking at this, you're talking about one year of your services with this contract?
Right. So, the initial cost is because we're populating everything, getting written in there. So, if you, if you maintain it, what we have is, we have annual or twice-a-year seminars that our districts come to. So, the majority of our districts come to those twice-a-year, update their forecast, learn about the updates, go back and maintain it.
So, this, again, so this software is only good for us for one year? After that, we could no longer can use it?
You, in order to transition it over to the next year, roll the data, then there's a, there's a charge, but it, this service here would be the initial thing to populate it. It's much less, I believe, this year, I can use the exact price, I think it's about $1,700 a year for a school district to attend a two-day seminar and learn how to use it and get all the updates with it.
You have it down here, it's $960, that's what it's set?
That, that's the daily rate. So, that's if we come to you and we're on-site. If they, if after we load it and everything, they come to the seminars and they're located. This year, we have one in Avon Lake, one in Canton, one in Champion, Ohio. So, they're central located throughout the state. They would go there, they have all 25 other treasurers, assistant treasurers there, and we go through a, basically a class for two days.
Okay, so the $960 for what additional add-on to any of the consulting services?
Yeah, a lot of times, when we initially contract with a client, they'll say, okay, we've gotten this, now we'd like you to go in this area, or we'd like you now to come and look at this area and do something more in-depth here. And so, that's what that would be for. There's also different packages that we have. Like I said, some of our clients want us to produce for the month-end reports, standard month-end report that we design and form every month. We deliver that to them and then we actually do the entire forecast twice a year for us. So, there's, there's a range, the entire way of things that we can do. It's just what the district's needs are.
I'm sorry. I was looking, do you have any problems with all the, with all of this?
No. No, we've, I think, one of, some of our partners have been in the school district with me and I've, we've had quite the crowd and, no, it's all part of the job.
I thought that Ms. Wester's been talked about a year ago, so I look at here on services provided by the consultants as four months.
That's the time period it would take to produce the forecast. So, and what, so what this is, what this contract will do is, it's going to get you a finished product forecast that you file in October and then help train your staff on it. And so, we would complete that within a four-month period, which would get us to filing for October, so we could file the forecast for you. We wouldn't update this throughout the year for you, only this contract.
So, we'd be getting four months, or is it just a process?
Basically, what you're getting is, you're getting a finished five, you know, the construction of a finished five-year forecast that's, when we hand it over, is ready to be maintained if that's the way you want, if that's the way that you let move forward by your staff and being updated. So, it's really for a one-time population of this document.
So, does that, could we use the software for a year? Because you...
Yeah, you can use the software.
So, we have the software for the year, your services, till the finished product, which will be September, fourth, and July.
Yeah, that's a lot.
And the October.
October, that's a lot. I might kill you in a second.
No, I'm sorry, that was just...
Yeah. Correct?
Yeah, okay. I'm clear now.
So, we could use more than this process?
Yes.
More than the five-year forecast?
Correct. Basically, the things, we don't do day-to-day operations. It's anything with reporting, data analysis, stuff like that is what the service we provide. We've worked with school districts, law and bonds, and they need to present to, they go to Chicago, New York, present to the bond rating and see if we've got a lot of it there. So, there's a wide range of those types of reporting, data analysis, and that we do.
Hello, Ryan. What? I have two questions. Okay, after the five-year budget is completed, what you guys will give to us to consider? What is the guarantee? If anything possibly is not mixed with us, will we have to pay for future services to fix it?
So, everything that we're going to do is be based on trends. There's no guarantee that it's going to be 100% accurate. We can give you all the data and show you everything and how we arrived to it and the assumption you'll have a full understanding of, here's the number we came up with and this is why we came up with it. You know, if you take, for example, this year, we would have said with, take catch, reverse from the mistake, we didn't know until last year whether we could get it or not. And so, whether or not we include that in this year's or next year's. So, that's one example. Another example is in Faggot County, is this year we're going to try and update for a property. It's just based off of recent home sales. It happens every six years. And then, on, every three years in between that, you know, it's called revaluation. So, we're going to use sales, sales ratio data and collection rates to say, okay, here's what we think that your property value, property revenue is going to come in at. And we might, based on all the evidence we have, it looks like it's going to come in at 2% decrease, let's say. And when it's all said and done, because of the more recent data the county has, it might come in at minus five. There was no data we had to support that minus five. Everything we had was minus two and that's what was actually shown here.
Can you phrase that one second? Question for you to answer, I want to know if Faggot County's, it happens in buildings and how does your decision ever fix it?
Yeah, when we work with our clients also, you know, the clients have come once a year to a seminar, we get phone calls, we don't charge people to answer questions and, you know, try and walk them through something, especially when we first start going. If, you know, if this was something that we did and then you said, okay, we want our staff to run it, we don't want you guys to run it after this. Starting it is complicated, not, it's not complicated, it's just getting used to the software, so we'll answer questions. Because most of us are treasurers, a lot of times it's like a nice get-back to them. We have webinars and they'll be with that for the entire year. They can, but usually at lunchtime, as we're treasurers, they'll call in to a go-to meeting over one kind of hot topic. We might be talking about modeling this, modeling that, it can be different ideas. And then, the most important thing though is, if you're going to use the software on your own, is to use it every month. Because we like to say that a forecast is actually living in a document almost because it can change and, and if you're able to update it every month and then report what, well, we thought that purchase services this month were half a million, it came to 400,000. Why? There's always an explanation of why, but as long as you're updating it every month, then they're even more used to it and it's going to be easier to use. We're, I think you want more difficulties if you want to pick up the software once a year to use it and then wait 12 months and try and update it again. A lot of times are lost and it takes a lot longer to go back to get it up to date.
How is the, I said I wasn't asking my question, so I did. And this is probably off the list. Have you guys been at the annual OSBA conference at the trade show? How is the OSBA next?
Yeah. We, we usually do three sessions at the, two to three sessions at the trade show and then we have a booth there. This year, we usually have a pretty packed house, not only at the OSBA, but also the OASBO ones. And this year, one of our clients, a board member and treasurer to Shaker, presented with us and it was nice because we really didn't have to talk, they did all the talking for us and it loads all the products. So, we always have, we try and pick an engaging topic that people want to know about, especially board members, you know, and you always have a pretty good reception. We have a really good return rate with all of our clients. But then you also have treasurers that retire, leave the district and someone comes in and has another way they want to do things, which is fine as well.
Now, with your, I was trying to hold it in my mind, it was just boring. With your software, in teaching, I understand all the jumping and showing our employees how to use it, you guys are going to come in and do this. The webinar, keeping them abreast of whatever is new, is this something that they will be notified at, you know, email, notified, treasurer or whoever, notified at a time where even one of us, we are less than honest, or with this, will be able to sit in on or put it up on our emails or on our...
Yeah, we provide to the treasurer the date, the beginning of the year, here's all the different webinars we'll have, and then you can be free to join if you want to listen. I mean, you know, if you want to hear about, we might be talking, one of the most recent ones we did was how to be fair, about the forecast is complete, the year's ended, what do we need to look at? So, we just kind of give different examples of things to, different ideas to look at, things to do, and, you know, anyone can sit on it. We probably train one point person in the district because if you, this, this is a, it's in an Excel file, so if you had too many copies, too many people using it, then if I'm entering a variable over here and then I'm entering a variable over here and it's a different variable than the one I entered, you're going to, there's no way you can keep the product the same. So, it's, it's one file and usually one person maintains it with input from others. So, I might ask my accounts payable person information if I'm the assistant or the treasurer, but I'm the one that's going to update it. That way, they know what changes they made and you have one hard, you have one copy of what's changed. And so, once it's populated, the, there's really things that you update on it monthly is, is you have a report that tells you what your expenses were by category. We call, it's called a state estimate too. So, they're going to put that data in. And then, as the state changes, the state payments, our state foundation payments, they don't change a whole lot and it takes them all to update them. You would go and update that section. And then, when your property revenue comes in, you update that section. All the other sections are kind of annual as far as updating. So, your staffing usually won't change throughout the year that much before you're going to change your staffing levels. your staffing levels. Benefits, your premium medical benefits usually only once a year, they're going to change, you're going to update that section once. But you're, you're maintaining a monthly cost, and then going back and seeing, okay, this month I was $20,000 over, last month I was $30,000 under. And so, we have charging graphs to show, okay, how far away am I right now, or what's the difference between the forecast I filed right now?
And to look at it, is this something that, that we'll be able to understand better than the financial summary that we get now?
Basically, what you would see, everything in, in these examples tonight, or the ABSS stamp, are different charging graphs that are pulled, there's hundreds of different charging graphs in there, and we try and make it so that it's as easy to understand as possible. You can keep those copies if you like, it's, like I said, it's my district's work desk, but it's the same template we use for, for all the districts we work with.
They come highly recommended, and who's in person makes that, and we all fits together well?
The book you need.
The book you need. We're going to need it a long time. I'm, I'm going to go with this one in time.
Um, yeah, I just have another question, looking at this, and this is quick, you know?
Sure.
We've just looked at, would our five-year forecast also look something like this? Is it, did I go across one of these pages and didn't realize?
That's the exact template that yours would look like when we're finished. The actual five-year forecast that's filed is the last page of the document.
Is the last page?
And we do that by design, we try to, because usually when we present, when any treasurer presents a forecast, everyone has a tendency to look at the bottom line, so we can try and give all the detail first, before the bottom line. And all of ours go there and tell them.
So this is exactly what we'll be getting?
Yeah, that template will be, some of the graphs may change a little bit, but that's the exact format we use.
And at the bottom, it explains, yes, I see that.
Yeah, we put our some things in there. And because I'm a more of a visual person, some people like to read more, other, you know, other people like graphs more, that's why we try and get graphs, numbers, and the wording, so that every type of word can, it's a little better.
I'm looking at the public finance resource team. I think I actually met two of Mike's, so, and then we met that team at the board leadership.
Uh, the, the one in Columbus?
Yes.
So that was in there?
I believe that's the one.
I know I've seen, I know I've seen the next one or some.
We presented at the Cogge County ESC, a board member, Trash Developments, two or three times, when you come to those. And then Columbus, we, at the OSBA market, we present usually two or three times. And Mike's, before that, Mike was with the accounts taxation for a very long time, and his, his wealth involved very, very individual, as well as everyone else, but his involvement in taxes and writing law really helped us. Everyone has their own unique characteristics and, and the company and expertise, and Mike's is definitely.
I do like that you began your career with the auditors, the auditor thing. Is it, is it?
Can I ask you, who did you work under at the time?
When I started, I worked under, Petrow was the head, and I worked in Cleveland office. And then, I think Betty Long Remembering was there, and when I left. There's actually three of us, just three that work for other states, Matt, myself, and Ernie. And Matt had expertise, and he was a lot of the performance audit area, and some of the fraud area. So, I have a lot of different. And so we, because we're partnered with OSBA, literally the whole team drafts up the agreements, here, we look at it, and, and if there's any questions or concerns, we work through. I have asked every person, just like, we're going to use any questions.
So now, so there's reason, otherwise I would probably accept the services of the recording, and it's real services to you.
A second.
The second agreement?
The services, services.
Second agreement, the board and the, so, I'm sorry. The public finance richest. Questions or discussion?
No, I would just, Madam President, I would just like to hopefully, by the end of this theme, by the end of this motion, be welcoming, welcoming me, you all into our district. And I really appreciate our trouble, and our very, they help to ensure payments off of us. Thank you.
Do you have a question for the session? Dr. Bahovia? Ms. Fisher?
I'm.
Dr. Keenan? Ms. Westbrook, yes?
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Now, when will you, are you going to analyze all of it, or are you just going to take the information that we have in this time, and you're going to tell Ms. Thompson?
What I'll do is, is Ms. Thompson, who are my point person?
Yes.
We'll work with her, probably pretty quickly. We will also work with another consultant, work with the district, bring us up to date on the work he's done. And then, we will start with the data dump that we need from the ITC, I don't know if it was, I don't know if it was counsel. And so, we'll work through Ms. Thompson to get that information, and start it pretty quickly. We have all of the tax element and property tax information for the entire county, so we'll actually, probably within the next day or so, start putting all that together, give it for you to get the data properly.
You know, I have one quick question, Ryan. Have you ever dealt with a district that, in helping them with their budget, when they went through like the merger, administration situation?
Well, interesting enough is right now, for, for merger, we are working with four districts in Geogge County, I don't know if you've heard of that, but there's four districts looking to combine, possibly one, in addition, in accordance with an association with Kent State University. Actually, two of them already, one acquired one. So we've, even that's like a year and a half project. That's probably the closest to.
So now, what do you, they're looking for five-year forecasts for you?
Um, we, I will probably be back in no later than two months to present our initial findings to you. And then, within, before the October filing requirement, we have the finished product, you will, it's a lot to debate on everything in there, I'll have a presentation for you, if you desire one, I'll be right here.
How can you not just speak and talk about your charges? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks again, appreciate it.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to enter executive session for the discussion of employment dismissal compensation and investigation of charges against a public employee.
So, the rule of seven, you have to make a process to discuss drug dismissal compensation and investigation charges against a public employee. Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Dr. Bahovia?
I'm.
Dr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Westbrook, yes?
Will the public get a chance to speak?
Let's go before we want to.
You guys have like two hours.
Uh, Dr. Bahovia?
Ms. Fish? Yes.
Dr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Westbrook?
Yes.
So we're going to have a, I think Mr. Jordan, that's what we're going to do.
Okay, this is the, this is the letter on your, your president, okay? Case, it's a public record request, form to Ohio Vice Code 14924. So everything with that, so this is special, something that you use for the comments, that comments work.
I'm sorry, I don't need to interrupt. Can you speak in the mic?
Yeah.
Can you please speak into the mic? I'm sorry, Mr. First of all.